Good evening, I'd like to call the City Council Meeting of the City of San Bruno for its meeting of September 22nd to order to begin by thanking the San Bruno Garden Club for the floral arrangement they presented for this evening's meeting. If we could have roll call please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Mayor Franzella.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibarra.
Here.
I can ask our City Manager to lead us into Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening we have a proclamation that I'd like to present. I'll take a minute and just read a couple of the whereases, I won't put you to sleep completely, but. Whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention estimate that there's more than one-third of all Americans aged 65 and older will fall each year, among older adults falls are the leading cause of fatal injuries and the most common cause of non-fatal injuries and hospital admissions for trauma. And whereas in 2006 in California there were 67,640 hospitalizations and 14,052 deaths due to falls for residents 65 years or older, and in 2006 there were 27 deaths and 1,573 hospitalizations due to falls in San Mateo County for residents 65 and over. The average cost of hospitalization for each fall is estimated at 42,000 in San Mateo County, and in 2008, 85 City of San Bruno residents 65 and older required ambulance transport due to a fall. Falls by older adults are preventable through advocacy, education, certain lifestyle adjustments such as appropriate exercise to improve strength and balance, regular eye exams, improved lighting in the home, and removal of hazards in the home. Now therefore, I Larry Franzella, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, designate September 20th to the 26th, 2009, as Fall Prevention Awareness Month, and encourage all residents of San Mateo County to work with family members and healthcare providers to identify and address the factors that could cause a fall and fall-related injury to a loved one. And I'd like to present this to Ms. Dixon from the County of San Mateo, let you say a couple of words.
Good evening, I'm Francine Seraphin Dixon, and I represent the Fall Prevention Task Force of San Mateo County. I also am the Director of the Hospital Consortium of San Mateo County. But the reason I'm here is to really talk about falls. And first of all, to thank you Mayor Franzella and other City Council Members for recognizing Fall Prevention Week which started just yesterday. It's our second annual Fall Prevention Week in the nation, and it is a time to really bring to the forefront this preventive issue, and that falls are preventable. There are many things that each and every one of us can do with our, for our loved ones, and that is to make sure their eyes are checked, vision is checked, that their medications are reviewed by a pharmacist or a physician, that they exercise as much as they can to maintain the strength and balance, as well as have their home reviewed for modifications or any safety measures that can be improved upon in their house. As was stated, there are 85 transports within San Bruno last year for falls. This doesn't include those of us who may have brought a loved one to the hospital or to a physician's office for also a fall. I'm going to just briefly tell you, last year we did a needs assessment, and I say "we", it's a group of 20 organizations within San Mateo County. The needs assessment was done of providers and 40 seniors in our county. The older adults told us that they, most of them had fallen, many of them in the home, but most of them outside of the home. And the other thing they told us is that they would go to physicians for advice. The physicians in the survey said they needed more information about how to deal with those older adults who are at risk. This last year we spent a tremendous amount of time in our county educating physicians. Our next year, we're going to concentrate on the built environment, because when the older adults came to us and said they had fallen, the majority of them had fallen outside of their home, they had mentioned uneven sidewalks, curbs that were uneven, and so what we are going to encourage all of you to do is really look at your, as you look at your general plan, really look at the built environment for the older adults and for everyone else in our community. So thank you again for your time. I'm going to leave with Carol, a poster for each of you, you don't have to put it in your office, put it anywhere within the city, a table tent, and then post-it notes. So if you, if anyone calls upon any of you on how we can find out more about falls, you can refer them to this website, which is available to anyone, but it's here meant for our county residents. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll make sure that that's posted here at the senior center as well. We have a number of programs that serve that specific need here, so it'd be very helpful for them.
Great, thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
This evening we have, I have an honor that you don't have every day, and I'm very pleased to recognize and make a presentation of a 30-year anniversary service pin to Parks and Facilities Manager Steve Freitas. Steve was originally hired in, on September 18th, 1979, as a maintenance worker two. He was promoted within the Parks Division to field manager, field supervisor before transferring to the Building Division where he served as a building inspector for a couple of years. Steve was promoted to his current position of Parks and Facilities Manager last year. Steve's passion for his work shows every day and uses the extensive knowledge that he's gained in his 30 years here with the city's operation. From median landscaping to ball field preparation to the HVAC systems, you know that you can talk to Steve, Steve's going to try and get it figured out if he doesn't know the answer, and if Steve does it, it's going to be done right. He has true pride of ownership and really takes responsibility for the job, and we really appreciate that, and it's my pleasure to present this to you, Steve, and meet you over here, and I'll let you introduce your family that's here with you today.
I think Linda and Larry, or the, my wife Linda and her friend Larry and coworker are the only ones that have been here for the whole ride. It's good to have a good realtor, and it's, thank God for a good life.
God didn't even send a check yet.
I want to thank my wife and daughter for putting up for, with all those years and all those call-outs and all that overtime, but I've enjoyed my time, my 30 years. Everybody around me makes me what I am, and I try to do the best, and I thank the community for giving me 30 years of this opportunity to employ me, and I thank the management and the council, and especially my coworkers and my staff, because they make me who I am every day, so, and I really enjoy working here, and I don't think I'll be here for 35 years, so just want to thank everybody.
Thirty more, but five more.
Right now, I'm getting a little long in the tooth, so I just want to thank everybody, and I promise you I'll keep up, give you 110% every day, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, I hate to say this, but I think a couple of things might have been missing from that. But I, to do just a speck of background, I tried to get a little more thorough. I thought I'd point out that Steve's personnel folder is one and seven-eighths inches thick. The reason it's taking up that much space is we have lots of combinations from staff over the last 30 years, directors in the department, city managers, et cetera. Lots of certificates from college courses, certificates as building inspector, et cetera. And when this 160-pound, oh, I'm not, probably shouldn't say that, but since it was listed on his original application.
I don't mind if you give out my weight.
Since that 160-pound kid did apply for the city, what he wrote on there, the reason he wanted to, wanted the job, he wrote, "I would like to make this line of work my career." Steve has certainly achieved that. This has been a wonderful career. I've known Steve very briefly, I've known his wife and daughter much longer, and she's nodding, yeah. Hello Christina. But what I have noticed from Steve and really appreciate is the detail that he takes to work every single day. Couple of weeks ago, we wanted to advertise the movies in the park. I was sent an email to Steve much after he left work that day, before 7:30 in the morning, the banner advertising the things was already up in place. And that's the kind of work that Steve shows, but also that he exhibits to his entire crew. And as the person who's in charge of our trees, our city parks, our city buildings, I think the city is extremely lucky to have him and have had him for 30 years. Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Through the chair.
No, I wouldn't speak, but only because of the relationship of working also in the past
at the Parks and Rec Department, and knowing Steve for many years, before, during, and after, and his willingness and continued help whether at me at City Hall as a councilman, with the alarm going off helping me out, to when I had to ask for some volunteer at the Parks Division to come out during a storm, Steve answered the phone, Steve would respond, Steve knows where everything is and how everything works. His loyalty and dedication to the town he's called home, and to the hours of volunteer service that he's given in various capacities over the many years makes him more than just an employee, and more than just a resident of this town. He's a good man with a great heart, who cares deeply for what he does, and it shows every day in his work and for the past 30 years. Thank you, Steve.
Item five, review of agenda, I have no changes, seeing none from council, we'll move on to approval of minutes of the regular council meeting of September 8th, 2009. The minutes will stand approved as submitted unless there's any changes or corrections. Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved. Consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action, may be enacted by one motion, there'll be no separate discussion unless requested by council member, citizen, or staff. Anything to be removed or action on consent calendar?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, and discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item eight, public hearings, there aren't none this evening. Item nine, public comment for items not on agenda. It's the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Is there anyone wishing to address the council? Ruth?
I moved call us on Donner Avenue, and I'm here to tell you a little bit about that R2R, which is Riding to Recovery. It's a wounded veterans organization, came back from the Iraq War. They are leaving Fort Miley and riding their bicycles to Los Angeles. They will stay in San Bruno for the night, the auxiliary, and I'm presenting auxiliary for the Legion. They are staying in San Bruno for the night. The auxiliary is having a dinner, October 3rd, at the American Legion Hall, 757 San Mateo Avenue. The cost is $10, which in turn, we turn over money right back to the R2R. The doors open at 5 o'clock to meet the veterans, and the dinner will be served at 6 o'clock. I would like you all to mark your calendars for the, for this date. We want these veterans to know we care and we pray for them. Now, I've got a, they sent us this thing telling all about what they do and everything. Instead of reading it to you, I'm going to leave it here with Carol, and you pick one up and read what they're all about. But it's the wounded veterans, and they're taking care of themselves, and we're taking care of them too. Thank you.
Great. Ruth, and if you could maybe get staff information, we can get it publicized on cable TV.
Yes, I was, I was going to do that. I was going to give a notice tomorrow.
Great.
And run down to the office, okay?
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the council?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the city and the public. My name is Jorge Jaramillo, I'm with the San Mateo County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to make an announcement and extend an invitation. From September 15th to October 15th is Hispanic Heritage Month nationwide. There being celebration, celebrations are being held in our nation capital, Washington, DC. Members of Congress are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month in the state capital, and members of the state capital are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, and in San Mateo County, we are doing celebrations. Last week, we have a celebration in the City of Redwood City with the mayor and the council members. We're having an upcoming celebration in the City of Daly City with the mayor, and on October 2nd, Friday, October 2nd, at 5:30 PM, we're having a celebration here in the City of San Bruno at Tanforan Mall. So I'm here to extend an invitation to the City Council and to members of the public to attend, and the mayor and the council member to give a brief remark to the public and enjoy the celebration. Friday, October 2nd at 5:30 PM on Tanforan Mall, and also the information is being sold by email. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ori. Thank you for being here, appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Okay, we'll move on to item 10, conduct of business, adopt resolution. Item A, adopt resolution, approving proposed tenant improvement and finishes plans for a restaurant as part of the development of El Camino Real commercial project at the Crossing. And, see, Andrew?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight, we are completing yet another step in what has been a long process to realize a dream, and that is to bring a high-quality eating establishment to the Crossing San Bruno project. That is the property that is directly across El Camino Real from the Tanforan Mall, and for several years now, since the initial apartments complexes opened and the senior housing project opened at the village, has been a centerpiece of our community and a demonstration of the regional importance of San Bruno within this San Mateo County area. Tonight, the step that we're taking is follow-up from your approval last month of the owner participation agreement between the San Bruno Redevelopment Agency and Stegner Associates, the owner of the retail project site on the Crossing property. According to the owner participation agreement, there is a required step before the property owner developer can proceed with actual construction of the building, and that is to obtain your approval for the interior finishes or the tenant improvements at the restaurant property. Now, as anxious as we are to see this project move forward expeditiously, you won't see these tenant improvements being built for a number of months now, because the shell needs to be built first, but your approval tonight will move this project forward, again a giant step. My understanding is that the developer is prepared and looking forward to the opportunity to pull his building permits. The building permits are ready and waiting for the development team to come and pick them up and, and begin construction, construction of the shell. We anticipate that to occur within the next month. Construction of the shell of the building to take approximately six to seven months with an additional four, five, five months for the interior tenant improvement finishes, with the hope and the expectation that the restaurant at the Crossing will be open by this time or shortly after this time next year. So without further ado, I'm going to ask the development team or the architect to come forward and explain what they've envisioned here for the interior of, what I'm understanding will be called Jack's, at, Jack's San Bruno, I think it is.
All right. Good evening. My name is Graham Post, I'm with MBH Architects. We have brought with us today the material board that displays the materials and finishes that we intend to use as the interior design of the restaurant, as well as some renderings, floor plan. You all shall have a packet in front of you that will help guide you through this as well. So far, we've established the floor plan, sort of the interior look, and we have presented it to the subcommittee, so if there are any questions, I'd like to field them now. I also have a 3D display that we can walk through to help you visualize a little bit more the space, because there's only a couple images that you may have in your, in your So if you want to chime in at any point, please feel free to do so. So right now, we're looking at the bar from the entryway, and so as we walk through this space, I apologize, it gets kind of jumpy, but we can walk through this space. The way it's laid out is, we have a central main dining room and a private dining that's off into the back. The space will be divided into two areas with a screen wall. Now, there was some comment about the privacy of this screen wall, and we are looking into developing the materials set forth to make that privacy adequate for the private events that are there. We're looking at either heavy drapery or some sort of, sort of wooden louver Venetian blind system that can be opened up to not restrict the view and make the space feel as one whole restroom, restaurant when not in use, as well as provide the privacy that you require during your events.
If you want to go ahead and do?
By all means.
I'm Tom Bannas, Bannas Restaurant Design. We work together on this project. The one thing I'll comment, as Graham is walking you through, that's what you're going to do when you walk through to get a cocktail as soon as you walk into the restaurant. You'll be walking through the restaurant into the bar, which you see now. The nice thing about this bar also, it acts as a pre-function to the larger private dining room in the back. So in other words, the back will accommodate approximately 70 seats as a private dining room, and it takes a while to get 70 people in one location or one restaurant. So instead of having to send them back there, you can actually go into the bar, have a drink, and then move into your, your dining room as your guests arrive. It usually takes people about a half an hour, I'm sure some people are a little bit more prompt than others, but it's usually a half an hour that they start coming to one place and then ready for a dinner. So that's the idea. And then the nice thing about this design too, is that as you see down that hallway there, there's the bar to the left, a lounge on the right, and then as you see, all the way back, that's another door leading into that private dining room, so without disrupting the rest of the restaurant. And that's where Graham's taking you now. It may look strange, but those things, the white things on the right and the left are light fixtures.
Those light fixtures will be repeated throughout the restaurant.
Is that your main lighting?
No, no, they're.
MR-16 downlights, low voltage throughout the space, shining each, shining on each table in each area that we, you know, decide we need it for. Now that enters into the private dining room. You'll have three U-shaped booths on the left, booths against the wall. There is some nice natural light. The reason that wall is a solid wall there is because it's a structural wall holding up the majority of the building. I guess it's some kind of load-bearing wall. So, and then there's also a fireplace in there. One of the requests when we first came to you was to try to make the room as nice as possible, and so we put in a fireplace. On the left there, you see a 60-inch television screen, so that'll handle all the AV that comes through too. It'll also be on a arm, so we can pull it out further if we need to.
The material of the fireplace is, is actually this stone right up here, which will help bring that room into, dress it up a bit and give it a nice central focal point as well.
In the private dining room, it'll be carpet, as you see there in the lower area. In the main dining room, there'll be a combination of, in the entry, you'll see that stone, that's the entry stone, and also in front of the bar and some of the bar areas. And then there'll be hardwood floor in most of the main dining room. But we do the carpet in the private dining room for noise. That's the biggest issue, to cut down on the noise.
So here's a view looking back at the bar from the private dining room.
Remember, in the success of the restaurant, it's important that we can utilize all the seats when we don't have a private function. So in the front area, it's about 90 seats, including the bar, and then in the back area, probably another 60, and we do need the whole restaurant in order to make it successful during the times we don't have private dining. The upper part, you want to talk about the ceiling? Ceiling's really cool. It's wood, and Graham's showing you the wood right over there, and so it's divided all over, and you'll be able to see those beams everywhere. They'll be dropping down about 12 inches, and then with the MR-16 lights, those will be recessed, they'll be barely noticed. And the really cool thing is, we found a ceiling right on the top there, that ceiling panel, that fits in completely, so it's not like 12 by 12s like this is, or like when you go into offices, you see those two-by-four panels that you see everywhere. This is a complete panel, I think it's eight by 12 or eight by 10, and it's really going to give a neat effect and also absorb sound, so.
So moving on down here, we have the tabletop finishes in this maple wood. This is the wood floor that we have to dress up the dining room area. This would be the bar top over here. The perimeter tile, oh, I'm sorry. The perimeter tile. Whoa. The perimeter tile is, this dark tile over here, which will be around the bar and the perimeter areas around each of the dining room and the private dining room. Makes it a lot easier to clean, but still keeps a nice classy feel to it. The storefront material is anodized dark bronze. These are the booth upholsteries, the booth seats are going to be solid colors, and the booth backs would be a sort of decorative but muted tone to play with. The wall finishes, which vary from a cream to a, to a sort of ochre and a light gray. Are there any questions that you would like to?
Questions from council? Mary?
Thank you. I understand the concept that you have the private dining room, you have the main dining area, and then when nobody is in the private dining room, you use that as part of the main restaurant. What about the flip side? If you have a private party that is big enough to do the whole restaurant? So if you have, you know, wedding reception, that's 150 people. With that in mind, the glass divider between the private and the main is going to be a barrier. So I believe I suggested last time, and I'd like to re-suggest it, that there be, that those glass dividers that you have, you can keep the same structure that it is and make the bottom panels like a window, that you open up the window, so that the people, if you have one group in that whole restaurant, that they would be able to talk and interact without any kind of constraint. There wouldn't be any, it wouldn't change your structure, it wouldn't obstruct anything, you would still have the Venetian blind type things you were talking about before to add privacy, but that way you could open up the whole thing for, for a larger party. privacy, but that way, you could open up the whole thing for a larger party. One of the things that the city has been looking for, for years and years and years, is a place to do that very kind of thing. So I don't, I don't know if that's a recommendation, a mandate, but I'd like to hear your thoughts on it.
Okay. Would you like to address that?
Sure. This has come up before.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not saying that it couldn't happen, and it does happen occasionally, but what's going to have to happen, if someone wanted to take over the whole restaurant, it would have to be quite a hefty fee to do that. And that's just from the business standpoint because of the staffing and everything else of the restaurant. So you'd be looking at probably like a $5,000 charge, or it could even be up to $10,000 charge, to cover the cost of operating the full restaurant and shutting it down. Now, a lot of times, that is not the most desirable for the patrons that come all the time. For example, if someone wants to do a wedding on Saturday night, that means your restaurant's shut down. And so those regular people that come, sometimes come every Saturday night to have dinner there, they're going to realize that restaurant's closed that night for them. So it won't happen very often because of the fees involved in it. And secondly, I wouldn't discourage it. I mean, I'm sure my client would love to take the money and, you know, figure out whatever it costs and let someone take over the restaurant. I have to tell you, we had this conversation a long time ago with your committee, and please understand, this is not a banquet facility. It's not a banquet hall. And I know you need one. In fact, one of my suggestions in one of the earlier meetings was, the hotel market is very difficult right now. You'd have a heck of a time trying to find someone to take the hotel site. If you really want to, turn that into a banquet facility, and I'll tell you, you'll do quite well. But it's not a banquet room, so please understand that we are accommodating the 70 to 80 people in the back. If someone did want to rent out the whole space, I'm sure John would accommodate, but it's kind of, it's kind of a double-edged sword, because like I said, if someone comes in, any of you, say, "I want to, I go to dinner every Friday night at, you know, Jack's", and if you can't get in there, you're not going to be very happy. So as far as the wall goes, we've gone back and forth on opening, closing. One of the problems with closing, opening the wall is storage of the panels after you open them. So then we thought, well, are we really going to ever open them? So then, I think the mayor brought up, well, you know, we do need privacy occasionally in that room in the back. So we're looking, there was a third thing we're looking into, Graham, I don't know if you heard at the meeting, but is that idea where the, there's a gas that goes in between the two glasses and cuts off the view completely, and it's simply done by a switch. So we're looking into that, too. The other thing that'd make it very difficult in order to communicate is, there are horse-shaped U-booths that sit on one side of the wall, which is in the main dining room, and then the other side of the wall is a banquet booth. So I'm not sure how much communication you could have in between those two, but I guess it's possible, but... So, I mean, I hope I get you to understand the answer. I'm not trying to avoid it, but it's a difficult task to turn a whole restaurant into, you know, a banquet room.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Is Jackson's San Bruno going to be open seven days?
Yes. Yes.
You say it was going to be open in seven days or four?
No, four, seven, seven days a week.
Seven days a week or...
And as far as, just out of my curiosity, as far as the evening atmosphere, you know, when you start, you can go to a restaurant, certain types of restaurants, sometimes, I mean, they're dark, and that's why I was asking about the lighting. I said, what, is there a technical term, or is there some type of way that you're trying to achieve the evening lighting in the restaurant?
What we don't want is what you're sitting under now. We try to limit the ambient light, and that's why we do the MR-16s, which is a low voltage light. It also helps on energy savings. But the nice thing is, you illuminate the tables as opposed to illuminate the whole area. So this is ambient light that, you know, lights up a room, it's, you know, great for a meeting hall, but it's horrible for dinner. The other thing that the MR-16 does also gives kind of a rose tint to the light. And what ends up happening is, people look better that way, and you want people to look better when they're in that type of atmosphere. Fluorescent lights make people look pale and gray and stuff like that. So, yeah, and the idea is, we can control the light from day to night. The really nice thing is, we've utilized a lot of the glass, so we're going to have a lot of natural light. And that's not totally controllable, but that's a good thing.
And my other decorative wise, I mean, is there going to be plants and interior stuff? There's going to be anything hanging off? Is there any artwork, whatever?
Not a wall, not a walls left.
Yeah, I know. That's why I asked, I mean, is that a good, accurate depiction of what the space is going to be, that you have just the vertical lights, light standards, and then just recessed lights? I mean, it's, because I realize, I mean, it's 10-foot-plus ceilings, too, so...
Yeah, there's not a lot left of wall space left. We're going to have very attractive mirrors and figures on the back bar. The room that's going to have more artwork is really going to be the back room, and because we do have two solid walls there. The other wall, as you walk in to the right, will be the kitchen, and that also has a divider wall there. So there's really not a lot of walls left. That was kind of the reason that I was pushing for those light fixtures that you kind of see. It's really kind of a different thing, but when you see it, it's very attractive, it'll give a nice glow, it'll be more of an art piece than it is for lighting, although it'll give you some ambient light.
Thank you.
Are there questions from council? Action from council?
Good chair.
Vice Mayor Ruane?
Before I introduce the resolution, I just want to say it's been a pleasure to work with John Markovici and his team, and we are ready to cut the ribbon soon, I hope. I'd like to introduce the resolution for adoption.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Prandella?
Aye. There's a unanimous vote for you. We'll see you on October 1st with shovels and picks, or whatever it takes, okay? All right, thanks a lot. Item 10B, adopt resolution accepting the San Bruno Bicycle and Pedestrian Study Report funded by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission.
And we're live. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be before you tonight to discuss the San Bruno and Bicycle Pedestrian Connectivity Study. Back in 2007, the city applied to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission to enroll in the Traffic Engineering and Technical Assistance Program, or TTAP. TTAP is a program that MPC conceived to assist cities with specific technical problems that required either some specific expertise or data gathering capability that most cities don't have in-house. And because the city of San Bruno wanted to look at pedestrian connections between the San Bruno BART station and some different areas, locations among the city, we thought this would be sort of a good opportunity to apply for some of that expertise. So the city applied in 2007, and the MPC did accept us into their program and assign transportation consultants, Fair and Peers, to do some of this analysis. That study was funded by the MPC at a cost of $15,000, which is sort of nice, because most of the time when we have grants, the city makes expenditure, and then we get a reimbursement for whatever agency is helping us. In this situation, MPC simply directed the consultant to do a specific amount of work for us, and which is a very efficient way to do things. There were two main goals of this study. It was to identify the routes used by pedestrian and bicyclists getting to the San Bruno BART station and getting to specific areas, namely the Tanfran Mall, the Crossing, and the Bayhill Office Park. And then, once those routes were identified, recommend some improvements that we might want to make to those routes. And so the area of study, sort of bounded by what you see on those bullets there, but it shows up better in this, one hopes, in this map here. And essentially, what happened is that Fair and Peers actually went out and actually watched where people got off the BART and where they went to and where they left, say, the Crossing or the Bayhill Shopping Center, and actually followed them to see what routes they took. And those routes that were taken, represented here in green, if you can see it, or the numbered routes, the areas in red are sort of bound to the major areas. So here, we have the Tanfran Shopping Center and BART, we have the Crossings over here, and then we have the Bayhill Office Park. And so the routes that pedestrians and bicyclists used to get from the Crossing to Tanfran was pretty straightforward. When Tanfran was open, folks simply walked right through Tanfran Mall, out the food court, and into the BART station. When Tanfran was closed, simply walked, you know, around the side and then into the BART station. For those folks on the east side of the Bayhill Office Park, they were observed using Euclid Avenue, going east on Euclid and then cutting up north on Huntington, or perhaps cutting over early from Euclid onto Forest Lane, and then taking that down and up Huntington. For those folks that were sort of in the back or the east portion of, excuse me, the west portion of the Bayhill Office Park, they used Route 5 here, which is taking Cherry Avenue north and then getting on Commodore Drive and taking that east through the Crossings and then to the BART station. And council may be, remember the action taken recently to install some sidewalk where none currently exists on Commodore Drive adjacent to the Federal Archives Building. And in fact, that was one of the major recommendations that was put forward by Fair and Peers, was this area on Commodore Drive that sort of lacked the sidewalk, and people were walking the streets, and it just sort of wasn't really a good situation. So that project actually is under design, as the project was funded in a 2009-10 capital budget, and half of that funding is provided by an outside grant. Another improvement that staff hardly recommends is the installing of miscellaneous improvements, but in particular, some wayfinding signage at key points along the route, namely in and around the Tanfran Mall and the BART station. If you're not intimately familiar with that area, it is kind of hard to figure out where you want to go if you're sort of a pedestrian here for the first time. So some key wayfinding signage would go a long way, getting folks from point A to point B. Some other improvements that were recommended, but still needs to undergo some additional evaluation by staff due to their complexity, some other issues, is these two items here. One of them is the intersection at El Camino Real and Tanfran Way or Commodore Drive, it's sort of that first intersection you get to when you're going north on El Camino from I-380. And because of the wide road, the number of lanes, and the heavy traffic, auto traffic use, there was suggestion to alter some of the pedestrian signal timing at that area. And then there was also some pedestrians observed to be crossing where there was no crosswalk or lighted signal on Sneeath Avenue, trying to get from Tanfran to Town Center there. And so one of the suggestions was to install sort of a pedestrian barricade and directing pedestrians to, hey, you know, to use one of the other signals. So those are sort of interesting recommendations that we want to study going forward. So it's been a little while since we did apply, so some work has been going. So we do have, of course, the Commodore Drive Pedestrian Access Project that is funded in 09-10, that's under design. Not only would the study recommend this improvement, but some residents and workers in that area also recommend those improvements. The other small-scale feasible projects, particularly that wayfinding signage, is also included in the Bicycle Pedestrian Improvement Program, which is another project funded this fiscal year. And we want to install those, hopefully by the end of this fiscal year. We want to use the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee to recommend where those locations should be for that signage and sort of the layout, and then let council have some input as well and give some approval for that. Also, we want to note that the findings of this study, small though it is, $15,000, maybe doesn't buy you a whole lot, but there were some important things that came out of this study. We want to incorporate those into a future project that we hope to locate funding for, which is be the Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan, something San Bruno doesn't have and staff is really interested in making sure we have that available. So when we have, you know, future grant projects, future problems that come up, we have a very clear priority in how those should be addressed. So we hope to have that going forward in future fiscal years. So then our recommendation would be to adopt the resolution, accepting the report, and myself and the director are here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of staff? Action from council?
Good chair, I'd be happy to recommend adoption of the resolution.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Mayor Prandella?
Aye. Item C, adopt resolution authorizing city manager to approve memorandum of understanding between the city and law enforcement agencies in San Mateo and San Francisco counties for record data sharing within the West Bay Information Sharing System. Chief Telford?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. The exchange of investigative information between law enforcement agencies plays a key role in solving crime. The majority of this information is stored electronically in each agency's records management database. Advances in technologies allow officers to access databases from other agencies. The problem is, all of these record management systems are not compatible. Our officers can access information from San Mateo, Burlingame, Pacifica, but we can't get information from Daly City, South San Francisco, Redwood City, or any other agency in the county. One of the goals of the 2007 Urban Area Security Initiative was to expand information sharing amongst law enforcement agencies, and out of that initiative, the West Bay Information Sharing System was formed to link agencies in San Mateo County with agencies in San Francisco County. The West Bay Information Sharing System would house a database, or the West Bay Region mode, at the San Mateo County Sheriff's Department. Through a software program called CopLink, each agency's database is sorted out and organized, which allows the departments to share investigative information over a secured intranet system that officers can access in the field. For example, today, if an officer goes out and wants information related to a car that he thinks may be involved in a robbery in San Francisco, he has to drive back to the station, call San Francisco, and access that information via someone over the telephone. Through CopLink, the officer could access the information with a laptop in the cars, and not only could he access that information from San Francisco, he'd have it through any agency in San Mateo County. CopLink also has a crime analysis component that participating agencies can use to link crime patterns and trends that span across multiple jurisdictions. Participating agencies of the West Bay Information Sharing System are required to sign a memorandum of understanding that details program requirements and participant responsibilities. Funding for the West Bay Information Sharing System and CopLink is covered under the 2007 Federal Homeland Security Urban Area Security Initiative, and the project is funded through June of 2011, at which time the participating agencies are required to pay a maintenance fee per officer. Today, that fee is $33. It's based on the number of officers in each agency. We anticipate that in 2011, that cost would not exceed $1,800 annually, and the participants are going to continue to seek grant funding to cover those costs. The request before you tonight is to authorize the city manager to sign an MOU for participation in the West Bay Information Sharing System. Approximately 2/3 of the agencies involved have already signed the MOU, and we expect full participation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions of the chief? Action from...
Oh, I have two questions.
Sure.
First of all, do our officers need any training with this new system?
Yes, and that training would be provided.
Okay. And then, as with any system like this, is there anticipation of it being upgraded in five years, 10 years, some kind of thing? And then, if so, should we add that to a budget item that we put money aside for upgrading? Or is that part of the whole thing?
We're still going to seek federal homeland security funding for this project. It's envisioned that this project will span across California, so law enforcement agencies statewide can access this database. And those program enhancements, we would also seek funding for through the grant. If it works out that the grant couldn't... If it works out that the grant couldn't cover that, then I would come back to you with a request for additional funds, well in advance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Action from council?
If not, I'll go ahead and introduce the resolution.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Mayor Prantella.
Aye. Adopt resolution authorizing city manager to execute agreement with Cotton Shires Associates for Geotechnical Construction Observation and Testing Services for the Rosewood-Madison Slope Stabilization Project in the amount of $48,500. Mr. Davis.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm before you tonight to request your consideration of a professional service agreement to help on an important project. Back on August 25th, you awarded a contract to do geologic stabilization on property the city owns behind the 400 block of Madison. So up on the screen is a site plan to reinforce where the location is. This project is mitigating potential for geological instability, and it's a very specialized project that has a number of components, including installation of reinforcing pins, a lot of excavating, and compaction that really requires expertise that's beyond our in-house staff. So staff talked to the designer of the project to receive a proposal from them so that they could provide the special inspection and testing to ensure that the project is designed and constructed according to the design. So the proposal is for them to observe continuously the work that's being constructed, for them to test as necessary, to also, at the end of the project, to provide a certification that all phases of the project were actually constructed according to the proposed design. And as I said, Cotton Shires was the design engineering firm of record, the geotechnical engineering firm, that are very well qualified to do the work, and as a designer, it provides simplicity for us to know that they have a full understanding of the design. The scope of work has a value not to exceed $48,500, and as for the construction, the project is, or this service, is within the budget that has previously been approved for the project, and the project's funded through the Stormwater Fund. So the recommendation is that you authorize the city manager to execute the professional services agreement for the value not to exceed $48,500. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have about this project.
Any questions from staff?
To the chair, just a comment. Staff was, I had asked, and staff was kind enough to accommodate me to go up and look at the site and actually go down the hill to actually see the cement being poured into the 36-feet-long, 2-and-1/feet-wide cylinders that they're drilling into the hillside. And until you actually got up there and physically saw the magnitude of the project, it was somewhat, you can look at it from Madison, and you just don't get the same type of appreciation for what the undertaking of that project is and what really, what you folks, the staff, and along with the contractors are going through. So it's much more of a project than I had ever imagined, but seeing it was quite impressive.
Any action from council?
The chair will introduce the resolution.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Prantella.
Aye. Item E, adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Conquest Contractors Incorporated for the Bel Air Storm Drainage Improvement Project in the amount of $76,700, and approving a construction budget in the amount of $88,200, and appropriate $85,000 from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. Mr. Davis?
Thank you. So mayor and council, so this project, the Bel Air Storm Drainage Improvement Project, is addressing a localized standing water problem on Fifth Avenue between Angus and its intersection with Seventh Avenue. This project has been long anticipated, and it was developed in consultation with the neighborhood, really to address quality of life issues in their neighborhood. This project is really intended to address flooding or ponding water that occurs in this location because we really have a very flat slope in that area, and we've had some localized settlement, and there are some trees that have grown large and raised the curb and gutter. All of that leads to standing water in this neighborhood. So staff investigated a number of design options. We also really engaged the community. We had an open public forum to talk to the community about their interests and what they envisioned for the project, and partnered with the community, really, to finalize the The design is a little unique. It's a project or a material that we haven't used before in the city, and it's going to install a trench drain, and up on the screen is a photograph of what that would look like in the gutter, so that we are not going to be able to maintain a slope or build a slope in the gutter to move the water. We're building a slope underground, so the water would flow into this grate, and we have enough fall to the pipes to be able to slope the water so that we can move it away from the area and not have standing water. So that is the design proposal. For the project, the total project cost, and in the presentation, I'm giving you a little more information, or presenting it a little differently than it was in the staff report. But we talked about the total project cost being $130,000. We have assumed prior expenditures for design, consultants surveying, and miscellaneous expenses related to the project of nearly $36,000. The construction contract from the low bidder is $76,700, and the project, for the project proposing, a 15% construction contingency. That may be a little larger than we typically propose, but because the project is relatively small, and there is a potential, it's a unit price contract, that we may run into some unforeseen's once we start excavating, we wanted to provide $11,500 so that we can continue the project if we run into any unforeseen's. We're also intending to need about $6,000 for staff effort to inspect and to administer the project, so that gets us to the total of $130,000. The project was previously budgeted at $45,000, and we're finding that the project is costing more than that. As I said, this is a new approach to solving this sort of a problem, so it's a new and novel material for San Bruno. We haven't used it before, and we really were off the mark as far as estimating. So that's the only explanation there. But what we find is we need another $85,000 to fully fund the project. We currently have that funding available in the Stormwater Enterprise, and we're proposing to appropriate additional funds to fully fund the project. The recommendation is to award the contract to Conquest in the amount of $76,700, and to appropriate additional funds of $85,000 to fully fund the project. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
Questions?
I do, I'm sorry, Steve, could you go back to the picture of the proposed, yes, it's hard to see on here. Is it the curb and then, and then a cut into the ground and then a grate over that?
Right. So currently, what we have is we have a concrete gutter and a raised curb. So what we're proposing to do is to install this grate and drain parallel to the curb. And so, the purpose of that is, as the water flows down the street and would otherwise be collected in the gutter, it'll be collected beneath the gutter, and it will flow away because we can slope the subgrade to move the water away.
Okay, I see.
So this is a visual appearance of what it will look similar to. On Fifth Avenue, we have street trees. It's a little bit different, but just in the curb and gutter and the transition with the pavement, that's an image of what it would look like.
Okay, because at that, at the point there.
Yes.
That's not where it's going to go, right? It's going to go up, up from the point and then across the street from there? Or is it going to go around that point?
So we're going to collect the water in this grate?
Mm-hmm.
And then, there are two storm drain inlets. We're going to flow it, collect the water and flow it underground to those two storm drain inlets.
Okay.
And then, it will continue in the underground pipes.
No, but I think she was asking, going back to the diagram of the map of the area where Fifth and Seventh intersect.
Yes.
Can you show us? You see there, it's on Fifth Avenue.
Right.
Where the dotted line is.
So this is essentially the gutter line, and so, the proposal is, there's an existing drain inlet at this point, and there's also a drain inlet at Angus and Fifth Avenue.
Okay.
So we're going to put a high point in the center and flow half of the water north to Angus and half the water in this trench, south to the existing inlet.
Okay. Are they very difficult to clean? I can envision mud and debris in there and getting them clogged during the summer and...
So they do require maintenance, but we, on an annual basis, go through and prep the city for the storm season, and so, we go through and clean out all the inlets. This will just be another location that we will, with our jetter, will be cleaning and preparing for the storm. It does have a grate, so leaves are not going into the drain. The leaves will stay in the gutter and will be swept up with the normal street sweeping.
Okay.
Regarding maintenance, we actually invest a huge amount of maintenance response in this location, vacuuming water, following up and doing things. So we believe overall, the maintenance effort will be long-term less once we make this improvement and install these new grates.
Okay, thank you. That's much clearer.
Steve, I just have a question on this grate.
Yes.
I mean, you're going to have tires, you're going to have cars, and everything, and just going to be pounding it, you know, day in and day out. I mean, are they proven to withstand, you know, that punishment?
Yes.
Or are you going to eventually have to be replacing grates because all of a sudden they're breaking and they're, you know, being dislodged, and now you've got, you know, a real problem because now you have a slot in the gutter that's unprotected?
So as part of the investigation, we actually have talked to other cities, and in fact, Caltrans is, has begun to use this method in a number of their projects, and many other cities are using this. And the feedback we're receiving is that they're not, they don't become a hazard, they are weathering pretty well, and so, based on our investigation...
His fingers crossed.
But actually, the grates are constructed very heavily, so they are a pretty substantial device that goes into the ground.
I think it's a very ingenious solution.
Robert Rekal, Seventh Avenue, and for the residents, we appreciate your learning on this. I just had one question on the $36,000 or whatever that you are proposing to be included in the overall cost here. It seems to me, in coming to these meetings for a number of years, that when there's such a type of project proposed to the council, you have the lowest responsive bidder, you put your contingency on, and you look at that as being the total dollar amount that you're asking the city to fund. I don't remember hearing in the past that you're asking the city to include in the total cost of the budget work that you have done to get to that point, whether it's the research, whether it's the going out and getting the bids, doing the meetings with the neighborhoods and whatever. Am I reading something wrong? Is this a new step or a new dollar category that is now going to show up in future-type presentations? Has it been buried somewhere in the past and we weren't aware? It just seems that low bid, 15%, here's what it's going to cost, here's what's budgeted. Can you address that somehow a little bit?
Mayor, councilmembers, really, in this case, really is not a departure from any past practice. Is the way how this is presented is maybe different than what, how was before, based on the fact that our department needed additional budget appropriation for this specific project. Typically, the department, when the department comes to you for approval, presents the construction cost and the contingency together with the construction cost, in essence, asking for approval of the construction cost of the project without to present the overall total project cost at that time. That's the only difference how it was presented today, knowing that the department exceeded pretty substantially the initial budgeted overall project cost, and that's why the department came before you with additional explanation and clarification on the overall cost.
Through the chair, just so I understand, so what you're saying is the reason it is looking different this time, to the speaker or to myself, is only because it went over the cost, and therefore, you wanted it to be more detailed to show the rationale behind that?
Correct.
Okay, but going forward, then again, you would convert back to the other system, which is it's not going to be identified as detailed? If it's within a budgetary, I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, but I'm trying to say then, why don't we, why aren't we consistent then throughout the process, one way or the other?
As part of our budget process, in the CIP, always, the project is presented with the overall total project cost. But typically, when the department coming back for certain approval, asking for the approval of that piece, and does not necessarily come back with the discussion on the whole CIP cost.
If I could add to the director's comments, we were asked some questions by a member of the public, and are attempting in this presentation to make abundantly clear how a small-dollar-value project has essentially tripled, I guess, compared to the budget in the total cost. And there was a substantial additional design effort, as the staff has already pointed out, attributable to this project, and that was part of the reason that we wanted to eliminate that for the city council, because typically, a project of this size would not require that extensive a level of design. So proportionately, design costs, contingency costs are at a higher level for this project and are significant drivers for the overall increase in the total project cost. Just to eliminate one small issue that Mr. Rekal raised, and that is the, and again, in our attempt to be fully forthcoming with respect to the cost increase on the project, and you've certainly heard us talk to you about projects exceeding their budget before, so when we do that, we attempt to address those issues that are particularly relevant to that project and to that specific conversation. As to Mr. Rekal's comment regarding the cost of public outreach, those costs are typically included in the overall project, in the project budget, as well as in the project expenditures. So there's, there isn't, there is, as the director said, no departure from the typical process here.
If I could, I think it would have been a lot more understandable if we knew what the $45,000 initial budget was based on, you know, because then you say, okay, we had planned, and I know some of the correspondence, that there was just going to be some new curb and gutters, and possibly that was what was budgeted for, and then all of a sudden we realized that's not going to solve the problem. So now, we have to go into this new-fangled, you know, type of gutter and everything, which I understand is going to cost more, but...
Yeah, and in a nutshell, what you just said is exactly the answer. The original scope of the project was intended to be a fairly straightforward curb and gutter repair project.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Action from council?
I'd like to introduce the resolution.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Mayor Prantella.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibarra.
Aye.
Item 11 reports to commission boards and committees. Any comments from councilmembers?
Through the chair.
Councilman O'Connell?
I'd just like to remind the public that next council meeting on October 13th, we will be doing the presentation for the beautification awards. So if you receive a letter in the mail from the city, it's a good thing, inviting you to the council meeting, and we look forward to presenting those awards.
Thank you. Council, at this point, will be going into closed session. First item will be a closed session to prefer, provide direction to legal counsel whether to initiate litigation pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9C. There's two items under that, two separate items that we'll be providing direction on. And second, being closed session to confer with legal counsel regarding Pender's Workers' Compensation Appeal, Employee versus the City of San Bruno and J-2T Integrated Workers' Compensation Appeals Board, SFO 050784 pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9A. There'll be no reportable items to come from that. From there, the city council will adjourn to the next regular city council meeting scheduled for October 13th at 7:00 here at the Severino Senior Center. Thank you.